Welcome this evening and we'll call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Bird, Vreeman.
Here.
Peters. Coronado.
Here.
Arnsors.
Here.
Hookstra.
Here.
Raymond.
Here.
Corbin.
Here.
Mayor Box. We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Like we have done for many years, tradition, we will open with a prayer by Councilman Hookstra, and then following that, immediately after that, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you wouldn't mind, please join us.
If you're so inclined, I invite you to join in this prayer. Our God, we are grateful that you're our God who enjoys change of scenery and a change of seasons and that you provide us with opportunities like today to enjoy that along with you. We're mindful too of the ill effects of some of those weather events. We think of those who are suffering as a result of storms and we pray that your presence will be with them, that they can recover and recuperate. And we think of other situations around the world where people are suffering and seek justice. And we ask that you will make us mindful and empower us to be agents of change and agents to bring justice to the world. Be with those who serve us and protect us and give us clear minds and insight tonight as we go about the business of leadership for this community. Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice and love.
Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. All items listed under consent are considered to be routine in nature and have been previously reviewed by council. We will enact this with one motion unless stated otherwise by the public or council member, in which event they will be removed from the consent agenda and placed onto the normal sequence of the agenda items. Normal items are presented in bold and are non-consent. So Madam Secretary, or Madam Clerk, would you please review the consent agenda items?
For A, absence excused. For B, approval of minutes, September 21, 2022, regular meeting and September 28, 2022, study session. For C, Ose of Office. For D, written petitions and communications, industrial development district request and plant rehabilitation district, JR Automation Technologies LLC, 40 East 64th Street. For E, broadband capital budget amendment. For F, Holland City Fiber Owners Engineer Services. For G, claim filed against the city. For H, approve M dot agreement for the 40th Street Improvement Project. For I, approve proposed budget for snowmelt repairs. For J, award bid, 7th Street and 9th Street Parking Deck Rehab Project. For K, tax abatement. Set public hearing for PA 198 tax abatement for Coops Inc., 881 Productions Place to October 19, 2022. For L, tax abatement. Set public hearing for PA 198 tax abatement for Trigon Steel Components Inc., 1448 Lincoln Avenue, October 19, 2022. For M, tax abatement. Set public hearing for PA 198 tax abatement for West Michigan Plastics Inc., 5745 143rd Avenue, October 19, 2022. For N, purchasing declare items as surplus. For O, acceptance of Michigan Arts and Culture Council Grant. For P, tax abatement. Set public hearing for a PA 198 tax abatement for JR Automation Technologies LLC, property located at 40 East 64th Street. For Q, set public hearing for Plant Rehabilitation District for JR Automation Technologies LLC, 40 East 64th Street. For R, 2022 Bureau of Justice Assistance Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant Acceptance. For S, South Shore Village Business Improvement District Board of Directors Appointments. For T, Fiscal Year 2023 Strategic Plan and Business Plan Quarterly Progress Update. Accept as information. For U, Winmill Island Gardens Approval of Bid for Fire Suppression System Upgrade. For V, Winmill Island Gardens Approval of Alcohol Sales at Magic at the Mill Event. For W, Winmill Island Gardens Approval of Bid for Holiday Lighting for Magic at the Mill Event. For X, Winmill Island Gardens Acceptance of Magic at the Mill Event Light Donation.
Okay, thank you. Is there any member from, anyone from the members of the community that would like something removed from the consent and placed onto the regular agenda? Seeing none, is there anyone from the board that, or council that would like something removed from the agenda, from the consent and placed on regular agenda?
Yeah.
Councilman Raymond?
Yeah, items E and F.
Removing items E and F and placed on the regular agenda under 12A2 and 12A3. Is there any other member of council that would like something removed?
I would like to remove item V. Management and Administrative Services Downtown Group. Winmill Island Gardens Approval of Alcohol Sales at Magic at the Mill Event.
Correct, and that one's to remove from the agenda completely. At the request of staff, okay? Anyone else? Seeing none, is, what is the pleasure of council regarding the consent agenda?
To remove said items E and item V.
E, F, and V, but to approve the consent agenda?
Yes, to approve the, with those removals.
Motion by Coronado, do I have a second?
Support.
Support by Vreeman. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vreeman?
Yes.
Peters? Coronado?
Yes.
Arnsors?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Corbin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Move on to item five on the agenda, is public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to address council and to make appropriate comments. Please limit your comments to five minutes. There's three lights on the dais. Green means you have three, or five minutes. Yellow means you have one minute left and red means your time has expired. So please state your name and the community in which you live.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Members of Council, Bob Janetsky from Sagittarius, I'm the Alleghen County Clerk and Register of Deeds. Want to stop by and give a brief update from the office and let council know what's been going on down at 113 Chestnut Street in Alleghen. I appreciate the opportunity. You may have heard it on WHTC on Monday, Alleghen County Register of Deeds Office rolled out the new property fraud alert system for those residents who either live in Alleghen County or own property in Alleghen County. They can go to the Register of Deeds site and in less than five minutes, sign their name or or give a phone number or an email to where they want an alert sent if someone should record something in the Register of Deeds office over your name. As you probably have seen on late night TV on commercials, property fraud and title theft are are on the rise and I want to make sure that we have done everything we can to alert those who have property in Alleghen County of anything being recorded in the Register of Deeds on or over their name. If there's any questions or concerns relative to that, they can go to our website at alleghencounty.org backslash departments dash ROD. Otherwise, they can call us at 269-673-0390. I'm very excited to offer this service for free. Those of you living in Ottawa County have had it for a little while already, as Clerk Robuck was just a little bit ahead of me. I want to also draw your attention to the annual report that I presented to our county commissioners a little while ago. While I certainly won't read the entire thing to you because I know that former Councilman Whitman's going to want to take it home and read it cover to cover. However, want to draw your attention to just a few highlights. If you turn to page five in that document, a little sign of how busy we've been at the Register of Deeds office and maybe why we think we need that property fraud alert. At the top of page five, you see that last year in 2021, we set an all-time record for the number of documents recorded in that office at 31,015. That bested the previous year's record of roughly a little over 27,000. If you turn the page to page six, you'll also note in the graph there at the top that we had the all-time high amount of transfer taxes taken in both for the county and for the state at 1.09 million in county transfer real estate tax and 7.3 million in state real estate tax taken in. Definite signs of the white-hot West Michigan real estate market. We expect that those numbers might be down a little this year when I come to visit you next time. We did see an increase however, on page 16, in papers of honorable discharge recorded in our office. As you may or may not be aware, we offer the free service of having our military retirees come in and record their DD214s or their papers of honorable discharge. That's a free service that we offer. And those numbers were obviously down quite a bit during COVID. They rebounded last year. We did see 28 DD214s recorded. It's free service, takes about 10 minutes whereby the retiree or former Army Navy Airman or Marine would come into our office with the original DD214. We'd make a copy of that and then issue free certified copies right there. And then for as long as that veteran needs those copies to apply for benefits or for his or her family, we issue those for free and we're glad to do that. Next, wanted to make sure that all of you knew that this past March, the 48th Circuit Court records went live in our online. In the past, you would have to call us between the hours of eight and five or drive down to the courthouse to access those records. You can now access those from your home online by going to the 48th Circuit Court Records website. As you're aware, Clerk Grim and her team are hard at work preparing for the November 8 election. We're very glad to coordinate with them. They do a phenomenal job on behalf of the folks of Holland. We are very grateful to get to work with them as we share that county line and all the excitement and challenges that come with it. Finally, as a county clerk, I would be remiss if I didn't ask you to please pay very careful attention to proposal two on your ballot as it comes up this November. As you may be aware, there are a lot of people who currently don't believe in our election results. As a county clerk, that creates a lot of challenges for me. And we have been the subject of quite a few FOIAs. I imagine the city has had a few of those as well. I don't see anything in proposal two of 2022 that is going to help provide people more confidence in that. And that makes me very uncomfortable. So please take a look at those, that proposal and make sure that you keep the city and the county in mind when you vote on that. With that again, I want to commend Clerk Grim and her team. They do a phenomenal job on behalf of the cities of Holland and we really appreciate the opportunity that we get to interact with them. I'd say that communication between the county and the city has been really phenomenal since I've taken office and it's been a blessing to work with them. And that's my five minutes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good to see you all.
Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment? Please state your name and the community in which you live.
Sir, Steve Spohoff, 1692 Shore Oaks East Drive, Holland, Michigan, Holland, Michigan, but which is located in Park Township. So I come as a neighbor to your city and, but also as a fellow member of the Community Enhancement Program. My colleague Jay Peters and I saw each other this morning at eight o'clock to review a couple proposals, but also work on the Community Enhancement Program. So I'd like to give you a short review of the Community Enhancement Program if you aren't familiar with it. It was set up by the MAC a few years ago, supported by Holland, Zeeland, Zeeland City, Park Township, Holland Township, and Laketown. The original document, if I was to quote it, is to support efforts that serve public purposes, the common good, and will have enduring positive impact on the quality of life and economic vitality of the greater Holland-Zeland community. So it's a broad-based regional effort by the MAC and by all of us, our communities together, have supported this Community Enhancement Program to the tune of about $90,000 a year. So the success of the CEP program is evident. You guys in Holland hosted a very delightful mariachi concert just recently. That was very well attended. Also on the front page of the Holland Zeeland, or excuse me, the Holland Sentinel was a report on another project that we funded, a part of, which was the astronomy or the Hemlock Crossing situation, or telescope there. That's out of all of our jurisdictions, but yet is a community-wide support event or item. So there's many, many things that I could point out, but I'm sure Jake forges some of the CE projects that we support. Again, thank you for the support. It really demonstrates that we're a collaborative community amongst all five supporting organizations. We support regional projects and we support critical events and organizations and we break down boundaries between us and we create community. So here's the challenge. Here's the challenge. We all, all of our communities, received ARPA money. Let me just restate what ARPA states. It's America, American Rescue Plan Act. American Rescue. Emphasize the rescue. Thank you to President Biden for this gift, these funds, now that the challenge is how to use this generous gift. And I think all of us can, if we really think seriously, it is a gift to our budgets. It's unexpected and it also can be used in a wonderful way. I challenged our Park Township team when we were going through the budget season to a three-year, $50,000 increase to the CEP. Before, we talked about how to use the ARPA money. And we approved that in concept, but I'll get to that in a moment. Is that, and so we were excited about the money that we received, but we also knew that the rescue that we could do in our community through CEP was critical. I can see the CEP, after being on the board for a couple of years on the CEP, we have made an impact on various organizations for cultural events, but also for something like the Makatawa Area Resource Center, which I was actually honestly unaware of until I took a visit there. But that's an organization in Holland Township that's doing tremendous work for our community and we bought some kitchen equipment for that. But there's folks who need help in our community. I can see the opportunity. If we were to increase our grants, we could make a more significant impact. Right now, we're doing grants between $3,000 and $10,000. Today, we just approved a $10,000 grant for a safety item that's going to affect all of us at the Holland State Park. It was an $85,000 grant. Because of the size of the grants that we have, we only felt comfortable that we could only do 10. But you think about the impact of safety and how many drownings happen in, at the beach, in the Great Lakes. Anything we can do to prevent a single drowning is important. So we, we supported that to the tune of $10,000, but just think if we could do that in multiples, if we had $30,000, $40,000, $50,000, there'd be a difference that could make, we could make a bigger difference. Bigger visions require bigger grants. Our CEP has proven the process. We have representation from all of the municipalities that support. And it works. And if we could actually transition from giving $60,000 to $70,000 a year to something over $200,000, I think we have an opportunity to make a bigger impact on some organizations that need some help. So we would love to have some, some of the, some increased funding. So here's the challenge. Here's the challenge. I had my colleagues take a risk.
Five minutes.
Sure. I had my colleagues take a risk.
Thank you, sir. That's, your time is.
Time is up, okay. Great, Jake, can you finish my comment about the four out of five?
Thank you, sir. Is there any other comments? Please state your name and the community in which you live, please.
Evening. My name is Matthew Van Zutten. I'm a resident at 56 West 18th Street in Holland. I am here tonight regarding broadband and the designation of the state and local funds for the broadband project. I'm a big supporter of the broadband initiative. I think it's something that we should all be proud of. I think it's going to be a game changer for the city of Holland. But I am concerned that $4.2 million of the proposed money from our COVID allocation, our ARPA, SLITHRIF, whatever acronym you want to use, is being allocated tonight or being proposed to be allocated tonight to that project. And from what I can tell, there's really three reasons I question the timing of this. First and foremost, the BPW has hundreds of millions, or tens of millions of dollars in its reserve fund that can be used for the upfront costs that this project entails. And we'll get reimbursed if the motion passes tonight from the bond proceeds whenever we release the bond. So in terms of short-term funding, I really don't think there's a need for this money to be designated tonight for the short-term use of it. Second of all, the $4.2 million represents some sort of debt relief, which will translate into a millage relief on the back end to pay for the bonds. But there hasn't been a discussion from what I can tell about what is the magnitude of that debt reduction? Is it a tenth of a mil? Quarter of a mil? A half a mil? How much are we talking about? There's no projections that have been given to you as council members in terms of saying, this $4.2 million, if we do this now, will yield a quarter of a mil reduction for the average taxpayer in the, in the city. So I think there's information that would be had still in terms of if this is the best way to go. The third reason I question the timing of this is that there really hasn't been a broad discussion about what we should use this eight-point, some odd million dollars of funding for. You allocated some of it for some firefighters, I remember during budget season. But it's just being assumed that this is the way we should go. This funding could be used for waterfront redevelopment and reclamation at the brownfield that we have on the lake. It could be used for other park capital improvement projects that we might have. It could be used for housing affordability grants. I haven't seen, and I've been watching for a discussion of the council members in terms of the prioritization of this funding. And that to me is why I think it should be delayed, these three reasons. It may be the best use of the money, the $4.2 million towards us. It really might. I just don't know as somebody who's been watching this over the course of time. And I would encourage you as council members to take a pause tonight, postpone this until a later date and really have a discussion about what do we want to use this funding for. It's a one-time source of funding, I get that. But we have an opportunity as a city to really invest in what we want to use it for. And so I would encourage you to take just a pause tonight and have a discussion at one of your work sessions about what do we really want to use this money for, rather than allocating 50% of it tonight to a project that you already have funding for in the village and you have a source to do upfront funding in terms of the BPW's sources that they can use to get reimbursed from the bond proceeds. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to make public comment this evening? Please state your name and the community in which you reside.
Anne Henrickson Zeeland. Good evening, City Council. I and friends who enjoyed the International Festival this Saturday, thank you for your volunteering for this event. As I danced with the Native Americans, I realized that what we are requesting for our religious freedoms is for them also. It makes it even more an honorable pursuit. I would like to draw your attention to some of the highlights from the September 21st City Council Meeting. As I and others viewed the YouTube video, there were some things that stood out. It was a pleasure to have First Liberty Institute Law Firm from Plano, Texas, here to speak of their goals and accomplishments. They are interested in Holland and are informed about the necessity for our protection of our religious freedoms right here. Chris Howell, Turning Point of USA, will be here in the future to speak about religious freedoms on college and university campuses. There are very, there are very interested students at Hope College that support Turning Point USA. We do have a representative here this evening from Concerned Women to Concerned Women of America, Washington DC, who will read for the record the proclamation of April being Faith Month. We are requesting that Mayor Box makes for the 2023 calendar that April would be Faith Month. As you remember, I was here in 2011 when Reverend Jen Adams first requested LGBT include, be included in the ordinance of anti-discrimination. That evening, there was a packed house of supporters from all over the state in saying, just do the right thing. Confirmed that LGBT must be, must have a protective ordinance. At the time, the City Council did not see it fit to pass the LGBT anti-discrimination ordinance. Then in 2019, the ordinance was expanded to all kinds of people groups, plus the defined sexual orientation language I mentioned, September 21st Council Meeting. It passed with flying colors. Mayor Box and Lynn Raymond were elected on that promise to bring the LGBTQ plus ordinance to fruition and it happened. The 2020 LGBT ordinance DEI, now DEI, was supported by a large number of sexually orientated individuals, their families and friends. They gave testimonies of being afraid to live here and being discriminated against in housing and employment, even though there were, there were no actual reports on record of that happening. Even still, they said they were afraid to report anything. Now listen to what has happened 2022 since the DEI has been enacted in Holland and Ottawa County. A young friend of mine told me of making a comment at work concerning the LGBT Pride Celebration in Centennial Park. She said, you know, that is wrong. Next, someone came from the office and escorted her to HR. They repeated to her the comment, which she said she had said, escorted her to clean out her locker and then to her car. She cried all the way home. She needed her job for her family. Her employer said they would call her. The next day, they did call her to come back to work. They put her in a new department. She had. She had to learn a new job, but she was so thankful to have a job at all. I asked her to come to tell her story. She'd be more effective than I am. She said she was afraid. Her husband said he would. After they prayed about it, they said they just did not want to risk for fear of losing her job and being fired. Look at what has happened in two years since you have your ordinance. Did you ever think that your DEI ordinance would stop people from being able to speak their belief here in Howland? We hope that Mayor Box will make that declaration for the new 2023 calendar for Faith Month. May I introduce the Concerned Women of America representative who will read the CWA official April Faith Month proclamation. We request again of the mayor's cooperation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to make public comment? Please state your name and the community in which you live.
Zaffar Vissu, Howland, Michigan. In regards to making the month of April Faith Month by 2023, the Faith Month proclamation, whereas the United States of America was born of the unanimous declaration that we are, quote, endowed by our Creator with certain inalienable rights, end quote, based on, quote, the law of nature and the nature of God, end quote, quote, appearing to the supreme judge of the world, quote, and acknowledging our, quote, reliance on the protection of divine providence, providence, end quote. And whereas religious freedom is known as America's first freedom as laid out in the Establishment and the Free Exercise Clause of the First Amendment to the United States Constitution, and whereas the freedom of speech guaranteed by the First Amendment also supports America's unique focus on freedom of expression, including in matters of faith, and in, whereas our motto, quote, "In God we trust", end quote, further emphasizes the importance of faith in our nation's founding. And whereas from our first president to the last, we have acknowledged America's faith with President George Washington recognizing, quote, "It is the duty of all nations to acknowledge the providence of Almighty God, to obey His will, to be grateful for His benefits, and humbly to implore His protection and favor", end quote. And President Joe Biden, most recently acknowledging Thanksgiving as a, quote, "Time to reflect on many blessings from God and nation, this nation and each other", end quote. And whereas America's Judeo-Christian founding promotes religious diversity and tolerance, and whereas religious liberty serves to strengthen our country's appreciation of all peoples, regardless of faith, and whereas eternal diligence is needed to preserve religious freedom, and whereas attacks on religious liberty and people of faith continue to plague our nation with some religious charities even being forced to betray the tenets of their faith in order to participate in certain government programs, and whereas many seek to criminalize religious beliefs on certain controversial areas, and whereas religious organizations in America have a rich history of charitable engagement helping the sick, poor, and afflicted, be it resolved that Americans should celebrate their faith and America's commitment to faith freely and openly with public displays and celebrations, including prayer and expressions of Thanksgiving, during the month of April, which shall be known now and henceforth as Faith Month, as a way to reaffirm our commitment to the religious liberty principles of our founding, credentials to the Concerned Women of America proclamation that has been made to the United States Congress in 2022. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to make comment tonight? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment and move on to item number six. Special presentations and recognitions from the mayor or council in regarding to Howland Youth Advisory Council, HIAC. We have some introductions. Thank you.
It is our pleasure to introduce Howland scholars joining the Howland Youth Advisory Council for the 2022 to 2023 academic year. Howland Youth Advisory Corps Council. Abraham Hernandez, West Ottawa High School. Ava Whitman, Howland High School. Angel Venegas, Howland Christian High School. Charity Irman, West Ottawa High School. Greta Traver, Howland Christian High School. Jay Wuhan, Black River High School. Leif Baumann, Black River High School. Nicole Genzink, Howland Christian High School. Amelia Traver, Howland Christian High School. Ezra Van Zetten, Zealand East. And Hayden Baumann, Black River High School.
For the Social Services Committee members, we have Amelia Traver from Howland Christian High School. Trenton Burgess from Howland High School. Ice Bedron, West Ottawa High School. Jaclyn Romero, Howland High School. Anna Tusing, Howland Christian High School. Brian Chinati, West Ottawa High School. Brisa Sandoval, West Ottawa High School. And Jaclyn Barajas, Black River High School.
Recreation Committee members. Henry Mulder, Howland High School. Tucker Henigan, Black River High School. Leif Baumann, Black River High School. Atif Usmani, Black River High School. Dylan Markovich, West Ottawa High School. Karina Martinez, Howland High School. And Yaslen Ochoa, Howland High School.
Environmental Committee. Eva Whitman, Howland High School. Lily Johnson, Howland Christian High School. Eva San Pedro, Black River High School. Jean Raywood, Howland High School. Kristoff Mandelfield, Black River High School. Alisa Mason, Howland High School. Hannah Huggett, Black River High School. Meredith Walters, Howland High School.
Howland Youth On Boards. Angel Venegas, Howland Christian High School Human Relations Commission. Greta Traver, Howland Christian High School Police Community Relations. Charity Irman, West Ottawa High School Team Corps. Ezra Van Zetten, Zealand East High School Parks and Recreation. Hayden Baumann, Black River High School Planning Commission. Jay Wuhan, Black River High School International Relations Commission. Libby LaFaber, Howland Christian High School Team Corps. Nicole Genzink, Howland Christian High School Downtown Development Authority. Yeni Salchoa, Howland High School Human Relations Commission. Abraham Ednandis, West Ottawa High School Max Transit Authority. Mariah Stewart, West Ottawa High School Human Relations Commission. Oscar Miller, Howland High School West Michigan Airport Authority. Please join me in welcoming the 2022-23 Howland Youth Advisory Council and Howland Youth On Boards.
And thank you to each of you. You are the future of, of our community. So thank you very much for your involvement. We do have the appointments and reappointments to these students for the HIAC. So is there any other discussion regarding this by council members? Seeing none, was the pleasure of the council.
Will be approved.
Moved by Hookstra, support.
Support.
Support by Anthorst. This is all voice votes, so we just need a voice vote, Madam Clerk? Or I guess I just run that, right? Okay. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same. Motion carries. All right. Thank you very much. And there's a reception that's being held out in the atrium. So feel free to go out and visit with each other and parents alike. We're inviting you to meet out with them this evening. So thank you very much for joining us this evening. All right. Special order of the day, item number seven. We need a public hearing, it looks like, on this one. But first, I'll turn it over to Mr. Van Beek regarding the brownfield plan.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You're Mr. Mayor tonight and council. So we have several public hearings here, but we're going to kick that off with the brownfield plan for 285 West 36th Street and 906 Washington Ave, historically known as, yes, I will say, at the woods. Now more affectionately known as Vista Green. We have two of our great community partners here that will give the podium here in a second to remind everybody about what that project is. And I think everyone will appreciate getting an update on where that stands and some exciting things that have been going on even this week on that. The brownfield plan in front of you, though, is, is a reminder, this is something that you approved very similar to, which was an innovative thing when we did it back then for 40th Street. Again, with these two partners for a combination of five, five homes on both sides, if you would, for Jubilee and Habitat. And while this brownfield not only covers site prep work and infrastructure, but through an innovative program where it runs through the state land bank, it also sets aside money so that the cost of the, the purchase price of getting into these units becomes more affordable. And I'm going to ask our guests to maybe describe or answer any questions on that also when they come forward. I will just let you know, moving into this too, that we'll have presenters. You can certainly ask any questions, have any discussion. There is a public hearing on this tonight. But we are asking and recommending that you actually delay action on this this evening. There is one item of detail that's in the final processes of getting taken care of, and that's the master deed on the property. And we would advise, and really, we need to get, they need to get that executed and signed and recorded before you would take action. So what we're recommending is that you hold the public hearing and then direct us that we would put this on the next council agenda on October 19th for final action. So just to let you know that as we kick off this conversation. But otherwise, Don and Steve, why don't you come up and, I think, describe anything I missed, but maybe more importantly, just give a reminder to all of us kind of where this project stands.
Thank you for allowing us to be here and considering this. Right now, the project is, is moving along. If you go to the site, Phase One infrastructure is all in. I expect we'll see Habitat breaking ground on a few foundations in the next couple of weeks here. Jubilee will probably follow in a month or so after that. Phase One will be 19 homes? 19 homes. That will be available for folks making between 30 and 120% of area median income. So we're really proud about that and being able to reach such a wide range of folks as we're trying to create more housing in the community.
So I wouldn't mind giving a quick update on the 40th Street project, which was the first brownfield site that the council approved. We have 10 homes over there, five Habitat, five Jubilee homes. All five Habitat homeowners are in their home. One Jubilee homeowner is in their home, and you've got the other four houses. Some subcontractor might be a little slow on wrapping things up, but anyway, just about done with those. But to give you an idea of the effect of that, that saved the homeowners there somewhere in the neighborhood of $30,000 per home by being able to do the brownfield. Being nonprofit builders, we get to pass that right along to our homeowners. So that's why it's so important to have these brownfields. Really excited. We had a great event last Monday and Tuesday night out at Park Vista, or excuse me, Vista Green. Some of you folks came and appreciate you being there. But the enthusiasm around the project just seemed to be, probably 250 people or so showed up and, and really enjoyed being able to walk around kind of the, the open area that we have there. So pretty excited about the project and things are going to change over there in the next few weeks quite dramatically.
Keith, you, you mentioned the, the other portion of the brownfield that, beyond the infrastructure. That's, you know, technically, it's called selling costs, but it's the difference between what our buyers can afford and what it costs us to build a home. You know, if market rate builders could be doing this right now, they'd be building homes. But they can't build homes for this population and make a profit. And this, this selling cost allows us to bring the cost down for our buyers and allow them to get into really quality, affordable homes at a price that they can afford.
Wonderful, thank you. Any questions from the council? Go ahead, Councilmember.
Could you just review what makes a property eligible for brownfield?
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna look at Lynn here. There's kind of the traditional elements of a, of a brownfield, blighted and all those types of things. But particularly in this instance, because it goes through the land bank, the running it through a land bank in and of itself makes it eligible legally for a brownfield. And really, while there's probably multiple things in this case that you could make an argument for, that's really the, probably the biggest and the primary component that we're legally utilizing. And the state has to approve and, and is prepped for after you take this action tonight. So the fact that it's in a land bank is, is really the carve-out that they've created, really to do projects exactly like what we're proposing this evening.
Just to mention the state land bank. Recently, the state land bank stated that the work that we're doing collectively here in Howland, including the city of Howland, is a shining star for using the state land bank for affordability. So you folks are to be commended because not all municipalities have realized or using, are using this tool in this way. And like I said, the state land bank is calling this, these projects shining star projects.
Great, thank you. Anyone else from council?
Yes, just a, a comment. And we discussed this a little bit earlier among ourselves. It's, it's different. The scheduling of building and financing is different from what we would do, maybe, maybe I would do myself. You know, now we're, you get approval from Brownfield. Now you're getting grants, and you've already started it, though. So what, what would happen? What is, what is, is this a risk you're taking or we're taking? Or the state is taking? How do you, how does this all, there's a lot of moving parts here.
I would say it's more of a risk that we're taking because the way that we do our homes, obviously Habitat's a little bit different than Jubilee, but we fund the money for our homeowners. Over the next 30 years, they'll be paying that back to us. We also make sure that our homeowners never pay more than 30% of their income for a home. So if this did not pass, basically Habitat would be on the hook for the difference between what the homeowner could afford at 30% of their income and what it actually costs us to build the homes. So Jubilee runs into the same thing. They don't sell the home at what market rate is. So they're taking a risk, saying, you know, we're, we're going to discount that home in order to fit the, the demographic that they serve. And so if, if this did not pass, then both organizations would probably bankrupt, pretty clear. No, probably not that bad, but it, it would definitely hurt the ability for us to move forward into the future.
So it's quite a mission that you have. Thank you.
Any other questions by council? Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you for what you both do. Habitat for Humanity and Jubilee Ministries, I appreciate the homes I see or I've seen have gone. I think I did the tour a couple of years ago. So to help me understand, so I'm new to this. So you sell it below market. So our, our, the tenants, the new homeowners, they still do whatever the APR is or the, whatever the rate is. I think I heard it was like six point something. I don't know if that's accurate, but I thought that's what I heard. But you guys take the loan? Is that how that works or if, am I getting?
So Habitat does take the loan. So our homeowners get a 0% interest mortgage. And then they're paying Habitat back over the next, it's, it's always 30% of their income. So it could be 22-year mortgage, it could be a 30-year mortgage. Some mortgages may be even up to 40 years. We try not to do that. On Steve's case, I know that he has to take whatever the, the rate is, whatever the market rate is right now.
And then, so how long, the, the people that have, that are now living there, the new homeowners, how long have they been on the list? Or how, is there a procedure that they've been working on this program so that they're given the tools to, you know? I mean, I, I was a first-time homeowner and I had to learn a lot of stuff. And so are they ready to succeed? You know, we don't want to just give them a new home or, and not that you're giving anything, but you're helping them, you know, achieve the American dream.
Yes, that's a, that's a great question. So I'll, I'll give you our answer and then I'll let Steve give you the Jubilee answer because they're a little different programs. But for a Habitat homeowner, they're usually approved, and then it's a year and a half before they get into their new home. And during that time, they have to go through two. And during that time, they have to go through two financial planning classes. Uh, one of them is a HUD-approved, the other one is a Dave Ramsey class. They also go through, um, two HUD classes, one on home ownership and one on home maintenance. In addition to that, we walk alongside them to, so that they understand what it means to be a homeowner. Um, they have to do sweat equity hours in the, to the tune of two hundred and fifty hours per adult in the household. And some of that sweat equity is working on their own home. Um, our typical Habitat homeowner will live in their home for at least thirty years. That's, uh, an, an average, and it's also a national average for a Habitat homeowner. Um, and just to give you an idea of the success rate we have, um, right now, we hold about eighty-five mortgages, um, at Habitat, and out of those eighty-five mortgages, I think we have three that are more than sixty days behind on their payment. The majority are up to date. Um, puts us at a pretty low percentage, the national average of a conventional mortgage at a bank is somewhere between seven and ten percent. So our success rate, we have a couple of bankers on our finance committee that just kind of shake their head and say, you're loaning money to the people that we won't loan money to, and your success rate is better than ours. So that's, that's how Habitat works.
From Jubilee's standpoint, um, we looked around and said, who did good, good homebuyer education programs? And Community Action House does a really good one. So many of our buyers come through their program, um, they fit our income requirements, and so they've gone through that process, a lot of things about, you know, how to maintain a home, home finance, that type of thing. They're coming through us through that program once they've graduated.
Thank you. And back to you, um, I, I'm not good with names or can't remember. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
But just, um, so the people that, you said there are three, um, there have been three homeowners that are sixty days behind. Is there a program that you work with? Is that due to COVID? Um, you know, because we just came out of a pandemic and so...
Yeah, ac- actually, we, um, could be various reasons, could be job loss, could be sickness or whatever, and we work with those homeowners, um, right up front. As soon as they're behind, we start asking them what it is. And since we hold the mortgages, if, if an extreme case happened and we had to go in and readjust their mortgage, we would be able to do that. Um, for the most part, it's some, a, a broken-down car or something that caused them to miss their payment, they make it up within a few, within a few months. And we allow that. We allow them to come back and say, okay, start making your full payment now and an extra hundred dollars a month to catch up. So we, we work with them. Um, I've been at Habitat now for six years, and we've never foreclosed on any homeowner at all, so.
Well, thank you so much. I appreciate the work that your organizations do in helping, um, citizens or our constituents become homeowners, because that is probably, you know, the basic of our foundation to have a, a home and a roof over our head, so thank you.
Okay, yeah, Lynn, or, um, councilperson, Raymond, go ahead.
Um, you know, I'm happy, I'm happy to support this, this, um, this project, and so don't, I'm just going to ask a question that I don't know the answer to, but I'm, I'm obviously going to vote yes.
I hope I know the answer.
So is there a criteria that we have in place that helps us to decide whether we vote yes or no on a brownfield project?
Yeah, so the first thing is, this went through the Brownfield Authority, and the, this comes to you as a recommendation from the Brownfield Authority. Um, they take a look not only at some of the state criteria that we talked about, which we just highlighted is, this is kind of a shining star in that area. But also, I will say that we communicated to the Brownfield Authority, which was a communication to all of you, that this area of affordable housing has been an area of top priority of all of you for a period of time. So it really goes back to, in a way, the adoption of what we've been working towards for some time and utilizing, which is our criteria for leveraging, if you would, different types of incentive mechanisms in order to achieve, um, and what we're achieving. And I would say that this, if you, if you hold that up and if you can be reminded, I, I, I remember, I think, most of it almost by criteria, right? Where we're really looking in a project where we're using multiple types of incentives, um, and this would definitely qualify as one of those. We're looking for not only the number of units that are affordable, but also the depth of affordability in that. And when you're talking about this project, you're talking about really, all of the units have affordability, and the thing that we're getting in here is we're getting into some of the deep affordability. Um, and then I think one of the additional things that's really great here is you're also taking a look at home ownership instead of just the rental market. So from the criteria that you've established, both in priorities but also in your policies, um, this really is kind of the, the gold star project.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would say pizza, right? Planning incentives, zoning and abatement, right? We, we've talked about that several times, and this certainly falls within the ability of our legal, um, ways in which we can contribute and help and support, so. Any other comments?
Just one question.
Go ahead.
Um, so brownfield, I was just looking up the definition, so it says generally, these have been areas that have been used, reused, or property may comp- may be complicated by the presence or perception of contamination, but that's not the case.
Yes, I'll take this one. That was the earlier question that we had of why this, because it doesn't fit that criteria, but because it's going through the land bank in the state law, that's the ability to use this tool in order to accomplish the state and the city, and I would argue kind of the, the, the universal community priority of getting these types of projects to support the people, um, first of all, that are going to be able to live here, but also support the economy that we're looking to do as we have businesses that need employees, that need housing. So it's not a dictionary definition criteria of brownfield, but these types of things happen where this really falls into that other state-approved category.
Well, thank you.
Okay, any other comments by council? Uh, at this point in time, we have to have a public hearing on this matter, so, uh, we'll first, we'll open it up for a public hearing. Is there anybody from the public would like to make comments regarding this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and as the county, or as the city administrator has mentioned, um, or manager, excuse me, city manager has ma- mentioned, this is not something we want to take a vote on tonight, uh, but it does need to be decided on where we're going to move it to, whether it be consent agenda or a regular item on the next agenda for October nineteenth. So Councilman Hookstra.
Yes, Your Honor, I would move that this item be postponed until the October nineteen meeting.
A motion by Councilman Hookstra. Do I have a second?
Support.
Support by Councilperson Coronado. Um, roll call though then, please. Madam Sec- Madam Clerk.
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Arnshorst?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Corbin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we'll move on to item seven B.
And Mr. Mayor, just, how's, it, it doesn't matter either way, but as you kind of set up, is there a preference from all of you? Would you like to see this presentation again and put it on regular agenda or put it on consent agenda next time?
I would say consent. I would be fine with consent myself, since we've already gone through it.
We do have many public hearings next meeting, so it's, so, uh, there'll be probably not a lot of controversial items, but there'll be a lot of process and time next meeting.
Let's just put the question this way, is there anyone would like to see on regular agenda?
Question?
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, at the next meeting, we're not required to go through the public, um, public meeting if correct.
That's correct.
So it's just a matter of having the item on the agenda, we voted up or down.
That's correct.
In that case, I would prefer to have it on the regular agenda. I think it's that important.
Okay, all right.
It's fine.
So since we have one person would like to have it on the regular agenda, I think it should be on the regular agenda.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Uh, moving on to item seven B, again, this one requires some explanation, but also requires a public hearing, so I'll turn it back to our city manager.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. So we have three items back-to-back-to-back here. Um, this is the series where we're actually going to do a public hearing on each. Um, I'm going to suggest that, um, I'll just kind of give an introduction item. We have multiple staff here that can get into detail on this. Just the introduction that I'll remind is, you know, I, I think with the viewing public, a lot of times people think, oh, downtown, and that the city with kind of our regular funding does all of this support and kind of puts extra money downtown to make it what it is. And the reality is that the three items that you're about to take action for are specific items where the property owners in downtown assess or tax themselves specific amounts. I mean, it goes through the boards that manage and represent all of those, and they are all unanimously recommending these assessments, um, in order to have the higher level of services and amenities in, um, downtown. So that's kind of the introduction that I'll give there. We have not only Matt, but also our fantastic staff of Amy and Kara here. So the first one up is parking operations and maintenance assessment, which is a three percent increase from last year, but otherwise is relatively straightforward. And I'm going to guess that I'll just say, if there's any questions that anyone has, staff will be happy to answer them for you.
Is there any member of council that have questions? No questions? Okay, we'll go ahead and move this to a, um, public meet, or...
Public hearing.
Public hearing? So do we have, we're going to open a public hearing at this time? Is there anybody from the public that have comments regarding this issue? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and what is the wishes of the board?
Move to approve the, uh, resolution recommended.
Motion by Raymond, do I have a second?
Support.
Support by Coronado. Um, Madam Sec- Madam Clerk, please read the roll.
Coronado?
Yes.
Arnshorst?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Corbin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to item C on the agenda, do we need any information on that?
Yeah, just, what this is for is to support the operations of the marketing and all the things that go in to promote the events and the other things of downtown. And in this case, there is carrying forward the same rate that they had last year. And again, just to underline, there's different boards that represent the entities here, and all of these rates that are coming before you tonight, um, include the unanimous recommendation from those boards that manage, um, manage those on behalf of the downtown businesses.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, do we have a motion or what would be the pleasure of the council?
Public comment.
Oh, excuse me, we have to have an open hearing, excuse me, public hearing. I'll open the public hearing at this time. Is there any comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and what is the wishes of council?
Motion to approve the downtown principal shopping district assessment, adopt the resolution approving the annual downtown Holland principal shopping district assessment as, um, given by this motion and the manager's information and the boards that have already unanimous, unanimously agreed to.
Motion by Coronado, I have a second.
Support.
Support by Arnshorst. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Arnshorst?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Corbin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to item seven D, Mr. Van Bee.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, and just a reminder for those that might only be watching, this is the third step in this process, so if it feels like, Moi, we're cramming this through, the reality is we've, we've kind of done this a couple of times already, and we do this every year. In this case, the snow melt operations and maintenance assessment does reflect a three percent increase from prior years, um, and it also does reflect the excitement that we are adding snow melt. Uh, so as the report outlined, there's just over fourteen thousand added square feet from last year, bringing us to just about seven hundred thousand total square feet in the entire, um, system. Um, and again, this, um, goes through a lot of process, a lot of work by Amy, spreadsheets and Excel spreads and pivot tables, and Brian gets involved too. Uh, but again, this is unanimously recommended.
Okay, is there any comments from the council?
No, there is, there is a lot of information that comes through, just to tell the viewing public. It's, and not only do we do it every year, but there's a ton of information that we look through, which I find actually very interesting.
And it's in the package, so it's out there for anyone to read those Excel spreadsheets if they so desire.
Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and open this for public hearing. Is there anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Is there any additional comments by council?
Excuse, I recognize a question. Um, I was thinking about this earlier and was looking for, didn't find it, but that could be my fault. Um, some fund balances, if we have them available, of what is in the snow melt maintenance fund. Um, I know that we're increasing this by three percent, also adding some capacity or some customers. Um, do we know offhand what that fund balance is? I'm just bringing this out of...
I'm going to turn this to staff because I see Amy looking at the spreadsheet, and she can give that number to us momentarily. While she's looking for that, what I'll tell you is, on the consent agenda, you approved some items this year. We knew that, and we are experiencing that, where, um, we always have some level of repair and maintenance, and we had probably, fair to say, a little bit more repair and maintenance this year, which I think is one of the reasons why we like to kind of settle into in, in some of these areas, having kind of a regular increase. We like to avoid the no increase for multiple years, and then all of a sudden you get a relatively large increase. Maybe they're looking, do we, come on up, Amy. I know you love so much to be up here and talk to all of us, so...
Women, I love to talk snow melt, so... The fund balance currently for snow melt is ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and eighteen. Again, this is kind of reviewed all year long. Uh, worked very closely with Brian White and with Lynn in finance, and we just kind of always, I mean, it's projected out until, uh, FY41, so it's definitely being managed.
I didn't want you to sit back there for nothing.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Well, I appreciate that information because, you know, um, it, it could be viewed that we just tack on this three percent every year just because we can, but, um, I can't remember the exact figures of what those repairs are that we agreed on earlier, but there's substantial.
Mm-hmm.
And so it, we're not do, just doing this because it's convenient, but there is a need for that upkeep, so, thank you for...
You're welcome, thank you.
For doing that.
Thank you.
I just had a question. Just wondering, where do you find that information? I, thank you for bringing it to us, but is it already in this information or is it in previous information?
Every time that it's been on, on the agenda, in your agenda packet, all the attachments go into it, so it's all right in the agenda packet.
Other questions or comments by council? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of council on this matter?
Will be approved?
Motion by Hookstra, have support?
Support.
Support by Raymond? Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Arnshorst?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Corbin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to item nine, written petitions and communications. We do have a public comment, um, email that you can email your public comments to at publiccomment@cityofholland.com. However, we have not received any for this evening, so we'll move on. Uh, item twelve A1, City of Holland Unlimited Tax General Obligation Bonds. Keith?
Yes.
Pete?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I'm going to assume, I know that, um, Lynn had communicated to everyone prior, and then she asked two items to be pulled off, and I know just, you can confirm or correct me on this, Lynn, but I think what you were looking for is not so much questions on those items as much as, we had a study session last week, and there was probably some wisdom in kind of a collection of different actions that are taken that night, which gives an update on where we are in broadband. And if it makes sense, maybe instead of kind of doing these items and kind of describing some things, with all of your pleasure, what I'll do is kind of give you an overall update of where we are in broadband and describe three, really four, items that are going to come up in the agenda back-to-back-to-back-to-back. And kind of describing them in context and where we are on proposed timelines might be helpful. Is that okay? Okay, Mr. Mayor, and...
I think it'd be appropriate. Anyone else?
And Lynn, I think I described that correctly, right? So let's use the PowerPoint to help, so everyone can follow along. So first, one of the items, and they're not in order here, but the request for proposals for what's called owner engineering services was developed and sent out and managed by the BPW staff, and was sent out to seven bidders. There were two that were returned. They were both responsive, but the interviewed and recommended that went through the BPW Board and is now being recommended to you is with CTC, and you might recognize that firm. That is the firm that we have, the royal "we" as I look at Pete, we have been working with for years as we've evaluated and done various stages of moving forward this broadband proposal. I think that probably gave them some appropriate leg up in really understanding what's in this proposal. So they gave and as outlined in your action that you'll take here momentarily, recommended it's a net of $511,000 total contract. And what that owner's engineers would do is it would authorize them to really take what's in conceptual form, which I don't know if that's the exact right word to describe it, but when you do engineering, there's a difference between we've got it pretty well figured out to we've got it down to the detail that we're putting it out for bid. What this does is it sets up CDC to put it out for bid to get firm construction costs and also in the owner engineers, also the ability for them to kind of supplement the BPW staff as they go through that process. So that's one thing that's in front of you tonight, which is a very important step and necessary step really to move forward with the implementation of broadband after the approval of the public vote, really in any way, shape or form. Then to give you an idea of what the next steps are, is outlined in this, that engineering will review previous work, the conceptual design, as I talked about, really identify the differentials of if the lane of the fiber will be in overhead or underground construction, a develop of all the specifications and the build schedule, and then ultimately develop and then handle through the evaluation and a final recommendation back of the RFP, the request for proposals for the firm that will ultimately design, build, and there was the discussion, remember, at study session last week, where there's a possibility for a period of operation for this firm to not to, not just design and build the network, but for a small period of time to operate it to some extent. Then roughly February, and give us some grace with timelines like this, right? February through April, then that RFP would be out. We'd review those bids, clarify, and then ultimately recommend a bidder both to the BPW Board as the first step, and then ultimately to city council as the final step. So that brings us to spring of next year. Then there'd be the additional kind of design and procurement and getting everything ready for the actual construction, which would go spring into late summer of next year. The staff at BPW at the same time is not only preparing information like what we're presenting to you tonight, depending on the votes that you take tonight, of updating that information and communicating that out to the public, but also really preparing for that stage of when there's something to sell, that that is well in hand and that we're reaching the potential customers and talking about what that looks like. So there's lots of work also parallel going on, all those types of things. So when you look at the overall project timeline as laid out here, and I think that's the last slide it is, you're looking at, right now, where the owner's engineer, developing that over fall and winter, then to prepare the RFP for the vendor selection in spring of next year, then to get them on to do the final detailed design and getting ready for construction that would start in fall of 2023. And then what we're looking at, and we talked with you last week, is kind of a phasing of that construction. So what we're looking to do at this point at least, and remember, we still don't have an engineer on board, we don't have the final bids on board, so this is all dependent on supply chains, and there's significant questions out there yet, right? But what we're looking at is that we'd have a phase one completion sometime in spring of '24, and then would be aggressively moving through the other phases, with a hope that the entire system isn't in place and up and operational in spring of '25. So that kind of gives an overall timeline and hopefully helps communicate again to all of you, but also to the viewing public of kind of where the overall broadband project resides. I'll circle back then. The first action that's before you right now is something that's relatively typical when you're preparing for selling bonds, and in this case, related to one of the items that we're going to talk about later, while we have the approval to sell the bonds, what we're doing is we're really trying to match and quite frankly, delay the selling of those bonds because there's some large questions that we don't have answered yet. Namely, we don't have the detailed design and the bid, so we don't know what the construction cost is going to be, so it's hard to go out and sell bonds until you know what the cost is going to be. But then when you actually go out and sell the bonds, we don't know what the cost of money is going to be yet. So what we're looking to do is even though with the vote, we have the ability to levy the millage, we have some questions and we have some process to do before we're actually looking to levy that millage. This reimbursement resolution, what it does is it allows, and it's pretty typical in these bond situations and aligns with IRS rules, that we could go back at a later point in time and capture soft engineering services, other staff type things, and hard costs. Say we would start to buy fiber, for example, or any things that we'd need, that we would be able to, even though we haven't sold the bonds yet, we can go back and use those bonds eventually to pay for those costs. And this first item, the broadband bonds reimbursement resolution, that is the recommendation that we're making, and that is the action that that would allow this overall project to do. And I'll step back at that point and kind of we'll walk through each item, but hopefully that context is helpful for all of you and for the viewing public.
Okay, for the business of item 12A1, is there any questions from council or comments from council?
I have a question.
Councilman Hookstra?
So the intent is to be able to reimburse costs incurred initially, as you say, if we have to buy fiber, pipes, or stuff, whatever, in order to make the project move along, that that cost would be reimbursed, which implies that the funds for that comes from somewhere. So where do we anticipate those funds will come from?
So there are some, but I would say very limited, funds in the enterprise fund that is the broadband fund right now. So there isn't a lot of capability and flexibility there. You'll see that we are recommending later in the budget that you designate the SLIF-RIF, the ARPA funds, because that is a set of money that we have right now that's available, that if you designate that money as recommended, then that is a source of funding that's relatively straightforward, but I think more important than it's a designation that is, as we're doing all the planning, we know that that's an amount that we have designated. I know it was referenced, but even though BPW has other funds in other cases, with governmental accounting, they're enterprise funds. So there are limits on, and you can, not saying that you can't, you can use funds across those funds, but really what you need to do then is, that involves the reimbursement in most cases of interest costs back to those funds as a requirement, because you can't, we can't co-mingle funds. We've got to be cautious in that process. Is it something that can't be done? No. But we've had discussions, and that's where our recommendation is utilizing, which is coming up in the budget here shortly, because then we wouldn't have to deal with really the reimbursement of those funds where we're kind of eventually having an interest cost from the SLIF-RIF funds that we'd have to put back into another fund.
So it'd be just, to put it one way, it would just be easier to use those funds unless complicated to use those as a source of...
I'm not, I'm going to look to Lynn to correct me. I mean, I don't know if we're recommending it because it's easy, that we're trying to get around doing something easier or not.
No, but practically speaking...
But practically speaking, and in particular, you know, when part of the SLIF-RIF discussions that we've had, right, is we matched, and right off the top of my head, I can recall, there were priorities that you all had as kind of a lengthy conversation leading into the retreat, and then the retreat, and then in the budget, and the multiple sessions that we had. And I think broadband was number one or two, right? And we always had the discussions of this funding, it was, I think it was the number one thing in the federal where it said this funding is recovery fund, but one of the things is to take a look at broadband deployment. So that's why we've always kind of approached it, even leading into the vote, you all indicated that this was a possibility. What we're recommending tonight is just because now that we've got the vote to formally designate it, kind of tightens all that up. If that answers your question, Dave?
Yeah, yeah. I'm debating whether I want to ask another question, just... Okay. Well, yeah, go ahead.
Just a quick follow-up. So are you also saying that it would cost more, because you said something about incurring interest if we used other BPW funds?
So, and by the way, Dave and Ted aren't here tonight because they're part of, they're at a statewide convention, and they're both serving on that board, so that's why they're not here today. So I feel a little uncomfortable because I'm kind of answering a question for another entity that reports to us, but still they have their own authority. But yes, I would say that it is common, common accepted accounting and other practices that if you borrow money from an enterprise fund, that we all know, right, that funding is there, and it's generated from utility funds that we charge users for rates. If you take that money out of that fund, then you reimburse the loss of that money for a period of time with interest. So I think that's standard practice, and we would absolutely recommend that. We wouldn't recommend otherwise.
Just for clarification on the enterprise funds that you're speaking to, those enterprise funds belong to the utility users across the Holland BPW service area, not the City of Holland. So, I mean, there are some residents who live here that are utility users, and they do have some ownership of those utility, those enterprise funds, but it's a broader area than just the city, correct? Just want to make sure.
Yes, and it gets more complicated there because those boundaries aren't the same, and in some cases, the accounting is straight across all those boundaries, and in some, there are partnerships, so like the water reclamation facility, which I always chuckle about as really the sewer fund, has kind of a dual set of northern area, southern area. So again, we're not trying to avoid in this recommendation something easy or not, but it does get complicated.
Correct. Any other questions from council? Mr. Peters?
So I guess where I'm stuck is if we used the BPW money, if we could, these enterprise funds, there's an interest rate involved. We're talking about a year and a half that we might have to borrow for some upfront purchasing for cabling and because the prices are going up and all of that. Do you have any idea what that cost would be?
Especially with what's happening in the market today? No. And we don't know how much we may or may not recommend to purchase ahead of time when you take a look at, for example, fiber. Like, would we, would we say, boy, we want to buy a lot of it? Or no, we think that market's going to be stable, so maybe we won't buy much of it? So, not trying to be evasive, it's just, I don't think we know yet.
Well, I guess, I want to make sure I understand this properly. If we used enterprise funds, yes, it might cost us a little bit of interest, but that can be returned. That money can be recouped from the bonds. Using $4.2 million of ARPA funds is gone. That's not, that can't be recouped. Is that accurate?
Depending on how you look at money. We have that $4.2 million now in our books, so it's not like it's somewhere else. So really, it's just a designation of funds that we have currently that aligns with the purpose of the government designation that comes to us and aligns with the prioritization that you had on broadband. So it would be a designation that we would move over that we could use, that we wouldn't have to do interest back and forth. But as long as that money is in our books, we're also making, I mean, Lynn is working on that all the time. So for example, the other bonds, not to be confused with these bonds, the fire bonds that we just sold, Lynn is working on basically the best place and the timing of that money to make sure that we're making money on that and holding at the same time. So I don't know if that directly answers your question, Jay, but...
No, it doesn't. That's probably the case. We, in January, had a host of priorities. You mentioned that the funds from ARPA, one of the things was broadband that could be used, and the whole country's trying to do broadband right now. But we have other priorities, quite a few of them...
Yep.
...that I think we have an opportunity to pay attention to. So I guess what I'm asking is, are we, are you sure and are you confident that we haven't taken money that we're going to give away from ARPA funds that could have been used for other priorities instead of using enterprise funds, which sounds like a little more of a hassle, but it might cost a little extra money? Are you comfortable that that is in fact the thing we need to do?
Yes, but the way that I would answer that is I would throw this back to all of you because in the pre-retreat and the retreat and the budgeting process, off the top of my head, and I think I'll name them and correct me if I miss something, but I think the top five particularly kind of money priorities that you all had, potentially not in this order, I'll admit, were broadband, firefighter staffing, and doing it sooner rather than later, employee retention and support and kind of the critical nature of that and kind of the labor market, the financial strength of the city overall and kind of maintaining that strength, looking at some of the projects that we're moving into and retaining that for municipal capital improvement funds, and then finally, affordable housing. And as I take a look at the recommendations that we made and that kind of aligned and we talked about in that process, is that the alignment of the ARPA funding, we're really right along all of those, except for affordable housing, which I think we took action on, and I'd like to talk about that too, because you all already designated ARPA for firefighter staffing, for employee retention and support, and then some municipal capital improvement, but also a retainer of the rest of the money for both of those purposes. You indicated, and we've kind of always talked about kind of a 50% number for broadband, so this would be... be, and we're out of order, but I think this is great to have this, all this conversation before we do anything, but to really kind of put that in, hey, we're designating, we're taking final action on that. And then affordable housing, I think there's so many other things that are happening that we're already committing investments of city investments into that. And then additionally, it's working through its process, some of you know about that. But for example, the recent Dwelling Place project got a very nice through Ottawa County designation for affordable housing. And I know that there's working on right now that there's another one that's going to go through that process of which I'm a part of, where I make, I hear recommendations from, they call them bucket managers, and then it comes to a group that I serve on that makes recommendations to the county finance committee and board of commissioners, and then they take action on that. And there's another, I think, very appropriate and significant investment that's going to be leveraging those county ARPA dollars for affordable housing. And I really feel that with kind of the full set of things that we have in affordable housing, I, I would not, in alignment with our other priorities that I've just named, that I think align with what you set out in front of us, I want to use other funding for affordable housing because I think there's appropriate investment going in that from other areas. So from my perspective, it's just my perspective, I think this has been something that we've taken a pretty good deep dive on, that aligns with the priorities that you've set forth, that we've already been using this, this funding for those purposes, which is why, yes, I do feel very comfortable and do recommend the action of formally designating this money for this purpose.
Okay. Not to be argumentative, but we have other priorities. We have, we come up with five, four or five every year, but there are some that hang on there year after year. Diversity and equity inclusion. I think there's some things going on at the county where I don't know what that's going to look like, but we've hung our hat pretty much on their controlling, their, their helping us through that. We've got an effort going through, through the PSD. I don't know what, I, I know there's a report coming up. I'm anxious to see that kind of thing. We have other priorities that, you know, I think about what the county went through and the community input and the engagement and just the discussion that the community had about these are ARPA funds. These are funds that we talked about to bring about, to hopefully maybe make whole some people that maybe needed some help from. And we've never had a discussion like that. You came back, you have come back with recommendations, strong recommendations. This is what we really want to do. But if anybody can challenge me, if we had a conversation among us about, listen, ARPA money, priorities, what the money's for, did we ever have a dialogue that might have engaged nine people in what, what's the art of the possible for the city of Holland and the taxpayers we represent? That, that didn't happen. And I'm just saying, I don't know how I'm going to vote on this tonight. I'm all for the broadband thing, but there are people in the community asking these questions. We had a gentleman here tonight raising a question. So I just, it seems like, from what I know, well, for the limited discussion we've had, if any, other than saying, here's what we want to do, because broadband aligns with one of the things that's, that ARPA wants to do. So we're all, we're hauled down on it, okay. I, I don't know. I don't, I wish there would have been more, again, I wish there would have been a little more dialogue among council members about these things. Could we have brought it up and said, hey, wait a minute, what about all this other, could we? Sure. But sometimes the way, you know, this rolls out, there's a lot of water over the dam before you really have a chance to, to just understand a little bit more about that important eight point some million dollars got dumped in our pocket, in our, in our lap. So I appreciate the fact it's easier. I don't know how much money it would cost if we use those, those funds. Sure, it might be a little more complicated. But are we missing opportunities because of the way, the decision-making process that's brought it here tonight? Have we missed some opportunities? I don't know. But, thank you.
I, I appreciate this discussion. It seems to me at the beginning, when the money was first a possibility, we talked a little bit about it because the language wasn't clear. And we were saying, is it broad, broadband was a priority, one of our priorities. We said, is it broadband and this? Can you use broadband and/or water or what? And, and so we had a little bit of discussion then. And I feel like at that time, we considered broadband to be very important, particularly after COVID made it clear that broadband just isn't available, internet isn't available to everyone in the community. And so I think that's, at least where I have the idea that this is something that we wanted to have happen. And I'm not opposed to using these funds that way. I think it's an expensive proposition. It's just going to cost money. It's going to cost a ton of money. And I, I don't want the city to go under. I don't want the BPW to go under. I don't want to incur costs we don't have to. So I think if Lynn is on board, and this is where, there's some of this I don't understand where all, how, all the money is going to work out, but it seems, I'm, I'm not opposed to it the way this is happening. No.
Councilperson Raymond?
Yeah. You know, I think, Jay, it's fair to say that we didn't have a public conversation about that. And, and honestly, the county really didn't either. They had a, a committee, but those were not public meetings. So the county really didn't have a process that was open. And in fact, they, after they had made their decision about priorities, that's when they put out a survey to determine what priorities would be, but they'd already established priorities. So I just want to, you know, we, we did, they didn't, they came, but I think that they came down on the priorities that are important to the community. And now they're working through the process of distributing those funds. And in fact, as Keith mentioned, are supporting at least one affordable housing project in the community. So I think that you said, you also said it when you said we could have had a, like, when Keith brought these, these, these recommendations to us, that was our opportunity. If we had an idea that we really wanted to, to think about other things, I think that was our opportunity to say, you know, what else is there? And, and, and I think that I fell down on, this feels like this is what we were prioritizing. And again, it wasn't a public conversation, except that we presumably represent what the public is, you know, feels is important. And certainly surveys have told us that, that broadband is important. And I think it's fortunate that we have access to these funds, to be able to use them for broadband. And, and so I'm, I'm, I'm supportive of using, and I know we're down, we're, I've moved down a few agenda items here, but, but I'm supportive of using these funds for broadband because I think it is a priority of the community and, and how fortunate that we have the funding.
You, you did say an important thing too, Jay. I'm sorry, am I butting in? DEI is, it could be in jeopardy in the county and everything. So we really have to be aware of that and know that there may be things coming down the line that we have to be aware of and maybe have to act at, whenever something happens. So that's just something, I appreciate that. That's an important item.
Yeah. I think we also have to be well-versed in what the funding, what the eligible uses of the funding. Like, of course, we would want to support DEI efforts. I just, I am not familiar with the eligible activities of, of the, of the ARPA funding, broadly speaking. Sure.
I think, I just want to affirm our processing in, from our retreat in January, that we took and looked at all of these different priorities in broadband, again, coming to the highest priority of this council, and coalescing with monies that have been made available that are gaining us interest, I'm assuming every day that they're sitting in our account, to money that we would borrow that would cost us money to utilize. And I had to kind of check my spirit earlier today before walking into this room to go, I need to represent all of Holland as well as my particular ward. And I think broadband in particular, through its citizens' vote, though close, it came out high priority for our community. And it has the highest impact of opportunities once taken advantage of from every economic pool, every race, every household, every age. It has tremendous opportunity across our city. And so I just want to link all of these things together that have been working and coalescing to this point. And it makes me chuckle sometimes of, or frustrates me, that when we get to a point of making a big decision, like the three that we're making on voting and bonds, and they're big decisions or using money, we get nervous or we get anxious or whatever the word is we put in there. And so I think we've had good process. I want to affirm that. And just remember that the whole impact in broadband is going to be tremendous. And I've always said, you know, personally, get it up in the heights faster, faster. But it'll happen when it happens. So thanks for listening.
Mr. Van Beek?
Just as a reminder, not to kind of weigh in in your conversation at this, but just another process point that happened that I forget sometimes too, so I, I would suspect maybe some of you forget, is that another step that was taken that differentiate us from the county is remember that we, you took action, and I think it was a formal action that we took, Lynn, where instead of retaining this as ARPA funds that had, had all of the, remember, we had multiple conversations about what interim final guidance meant and kind of the frustrations that we had with that. What ended up happening is that the federal government basically get, and remember the metaphor that I used for that, they kind of gave a standard deduction, like on your taxes, of $10 million or less. And you took action to basically say, we're going to, we're going to claim our standard deduction and claim the ARPA of 8.4 and change as a standard deduction. And while that doesn't totally free us from some of the reporting requirements, we recommended and you approved doing that because it did give us in some ways more flexibility. But remember what, and we talked about that, that it's still, all of this funds still needs to be paid within kind of our government, what we can use governmental funds for. Whereby the county, because they have 57 million, which is more than the 10 million, they're dealing with a large amount that is still very closely tied to what, quite frankly, still is interim final guidance and still kind of changes all the time. So there's not good, bad, or otherwise, just a reminder that we also had that discussion and took those steps in the process.
Councilman?
Yeah, just, I, I wonder if you could, I know that we don't know what the final cost will be, but can you like throw out, if, if we were, if we took out the entire 30 million and then invested the 4.2, can you give a sense of what that decrease in millage would be?
So let's check my ma, don't hold me to my math, and I'm going to look at Lynn and her, her mind will go much faster, but.
She's better calculating.
Yeah. Well, so here are the things that we're dealing with and why, remember that we've talked about 30 million in the bond, because what we didn't want to do is either with the cost of money or with supply chain and all the things, we didn't want to undershoot what we might think it's going to come in. And remember, we've talked about, and even there's a reference in here tonight, that we're hopeful that instead of 30 million, it might kind of be 24, 25 million and actually have a budget amendment tonight that brings it to 25 million. So it's kind of an updated, but the number. But, and Pete's going to go, please say this, Keith. That is an estimate that we have right now that we don't have that yet. And there's no way that we're going to undershoot that because the last thing we want to do is say, hey, we're, we're going to build this thing, but oh, we got surprised by the number and now we can't build it. So that's the flexibility of, you're correct. We don't know what it's going to cost yet. But the 30 million, with the information that we put out in the ballot, I might be a little bit off, but I think I'm pretty close. The 30 million talked about a 1.5 mil in the first year and an average of 1.12 mils over the life of the bond. Now you might ask, well, why does that go down over time? Math. Because the amount of the millage charged against the overall taxable value of the entire city, as the taxable value goes up, then the amount that we have to pay back in bonds is going to stay constant. So the millage rate that we have to assess as the taxable value of this city, at least theoretically, hopefully goes up, the millage rate drops. But if I do my math roughly with a lot of moving figures, a $4 million and change is probably about a quarter of a mil. And I think if I'm thinking of that correctly, Lynn, that quarter of the mil probably, it kind of, it, it, the 4 million has the possibility of compounding and really being a quarter of a mil over the entire life of the loan. So it, it wouldn't even, it wouldn't just lower that 1.5 mils, but it would lower that 1.12 mils average over the life of the loan also.
Thank you.
Does that help?
Yep.
So just a few comments. I, I guess first a question. Keith, when did we establish the committee to look at ARPA? How long ago did we do that?
So we had discussions directly. Sorry. We had discussions directly with you. The county had a committee that was established quite a, quite a bit after, actually, we had the directs, we had the conversations with you and kind of had some of the priorities that we talked about earlier tonight.
But the individuals that you're working with, with the ARPA funds that we have currently, there's a group of you right now on behalf of the city looking at how to use those ARPA funds, correct?
S, staff, but I, I, I want to make clear again, it's not like we came up with, boy, we, we aligned the spending of the ARPA funds based upon the priorities that you've had historically set and what you set at the retreat.
Like, like many projects that we've handed down to you, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so I think it's important is that you're looking at grant, what the grant permits us to use those funds. You mentioned, everyone, a few of you have mentioned it before. It's real important to make sure we align with those or you end up paying money back. That's, that's ugly. But if we were to borrow against the enterprise funds, I don't know, is it possible that could impact us borrowing or the bonds themselves by how we, how we obtain some of those funds? You know, by borrowing against, using enterprise funds for the purpose of.
I don't, I, it's hard for me to speculate. And again, because they're, like, we're not, we're not directly in charge of those funds because you have another entity that's in charge of those funds. I do want to make clear though, too, remember, whatever you'd borrow for those funds, not only would you have to pay those enterprise funds back the amount that you borrowed, like, we can't use funds from another enterprise fund and not, it's not just the interest you pay it back. You'd have to pay back the amount that you borrowed plus interest.
Right, right. It's, it's, I guess I'm trying to instill that there's a, it's complex when we start talking about the use of enterprise funds for this purpose, so.
It is, but again, I want to say. We're, we're not recommending against it because it's hard or easy. That's not, that's not a major factor in, in our recommendation.
All I'm saying is there's complexities involved with it. So, so, and, and, and the funds that we're talking about are being applied to the overall project, correct? Which reduces, at the end of the day, as we've just mentioned, the cost to the, the public that we're serving. And that includes all those people you mentioned. It's not just a handful of people. It's everyone across the board that's going to benefit from us using these funds in this, for this manner. So I guess I'm in favor and supportive of this measure and, and anything that supports us getting broadband into the hands of everyone. But with that said, I, I took the pleasure of allowing a broader discussion on this issue. But with that said, I took the pleasure of allowing a broader discussion on this issue. I know we got away from the agenda. The purpose though is it's intertwined and interconnected. I think it was important for us to have this conversation, so I appreciate the dialogue by my colleagues on the council here on this, on this. But we do have to get back to the business of whether or not we're going to act on this. So what is the pleasure of council for items, we're now at seven? 12A1, 12A1. Yep, 12A1. What is the pleasure of council regarding this?
Move we approve.
Moved by Hookstrid, I have support.
Support.
Support by Coronado. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Raymond?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Peters? Coronado?
Yes.
Arnsors?
Yes.
Hookstrid?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Corbin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So now we're going to move down the agenda to items 12E. Nope, excuse me, 12A12, broadband capital project. Do we need further discussion on this matter?
Yeah, and just to outline this, basically what this does is just making, making that budget amendment that I suggested earlier where it's, it's actually increasing the, the budget right now, best estimate from 24 million to 25 million. And it also removes, there's a reference in there where the BPW was moving forward with, that you may or may not recall, but they were moving forward with doing a particular project of kind of the pre broadband millage of doing kind of incremental work and expanding. And where they're pulling, understandably, they're pulling that project off because that's being captured in the larger deployment of broadband citywide. So that's the item in for, in front of you right now is recommended by the BPW board.
Okay, any further comments by council regarding 12A2? Councilman Hookstrid?
This may or may not be kind of a funny thought, but they're amending the budget, but are they, I probably shouldn't ask this, but are they, are they providing the source to? Or are we going back to, that's coming from the bonds and that's any...
Yeah, it's really updating it, even when they, like, they had a holder in there. So that's kind of the way you do it, where you're anticipating, you know, the cost.
I wonder if we can do that, you know, we can increase our budget by 25 bucks.
Wouldn't it be great if we could increase revenues and not have to match it with expenses?
All right, thanks.
Any further comments, questions from council? Seeing none, what is the pleasure of council on this matter?
Move to approve the broadband capital budget amendment.
Motion by Raymond, do I have a second?
Support.
Support by Coronado. Madam, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Raymond?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Arnsors?
Yes.
Hookstrid?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Corbin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we'll move on to item 12A3, Holland Fiber Owners Engineering Services.
And I think I covered this in the PowerPoint presentation. This is basically that owner's engineer, 511,000-ish, if someone has it pulled up, there's that exact amount. And that really allows the BPW to continue in this process of getting things ready for ultimate bid and construction.
Any questions or comments regarding this matter from council? Counselperson Raymond?
So this is, this is some of those funds that would be reimbursed, right?
Yes.
And is included in the total cost?
Correct. Oh, yep, I'm on. It would be part of the eventual overall budget, right? And the bonding is there, but then depending on what you do here momentarily, right, we eventually have to bond for less depending on what you do with the slifref, if that makes sense.
Any other further questions or comments? Seeing none was the pleasure of the board regarding item 12A3.
Move to approve the Holland City Fiber Owners Engineering Services proposal.
Motion by Raymond?
Support.
Support by Coronado. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Peters?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Arnsors?
Yes.
Hookstrid?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Corbin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving to item 12E4.1, designation of state and local fiscal recovery funds for broadband.
I think we've talked about it.
We've had a lot of conversation. Is there any other comments or questions from council? Councilman Hookstrid?
I will after a motion is made.
Okay. What is the pleasure of council?
I move we approve designation of state and local fiscal recovery funds for broadband.
Motion by Arnsors?
Support.
Support by Coronado and open discussion.
Yeah, thanks. Just a quick, hopefully, comment and then a question at the end. First of all, I want to thank the good gentleman during public comment for bringing up those questions. They were very good ones. And hopefully you've heard some response to those questions through this discussion. I've said it before and I've had a little bit of concern about the use of this 4.2 million dollars where in the project it was going to be used. And not to be redundant, but my thought has been that the success of this project relies in no small part to how much it's going to be used, the take rate, if you will. How many folks are going to sign up to get this service? And when it was first proposed, we were told, you know, run the wires, it's going to cost this much. And, and then to get the wire from the pole to the house, it's going to cost each subscriber somewhere in the neighborhood of $800. The good news is you could spread that out over a bunch of time and so it's like, you know, a few bucks a month, the cost of a beer or whatever. But as I talk to people and when I hear, or am faced with situations like that, I don't necessarily, and I think many people don't, take the long view and say, okay, monthly it's not that much, over time it'll pay for it. I look at that, that bulk amount and say, man, that's a lot of money. And I think many other people would look at that and have the same reaction, creating a roadblock to that take rate. And so I was concerned about how to reduce that roadblock as much as we could. And the thought was, in my mind, if we took that 4.2 million dollars and applied it to that cost, you know, would the effect of that make it much more palatable to subscribers? And I don't really know the answer to that because I don't know the impact of that to the, the overall amount. Just as much as it's hard to predict what applying this 4 million dollars to, you know, the ultimate cost is what kind of impact that's going to have. We can't, as we've heard, can't predict that and that's, that's okay. That's the nature of things. So my, I'm not asking a question, I guess. My ongoing concern is, and I heard some reference to this in our study session last week, that folks from BPW are considering now moving away from that large amount to incorporating that cost into the overall costs or the cost of doing business, if you will, which may subtly raise the price, but I think doesn't provide that sort of blatant obstacle to signing up for services. So my hope is, and I stated it and I'll keep reminding folks, I hope that the attention is maintained on providing that easy access to the final product, to the customer. I'm not going to rehash everything else that's been said. My question is, in the wording of the recommendation and what we're going to be voting on, the recommendation is that it's council designate the 4.2 million dollars of the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds program award, a part of the American Rescue Plan, to be used for the city HPB, whatever that is, broadband project and amend the budget accordingly. This is stating that that money's going to be used for the project, but it is not specific to what part of the project. So my question is, is that problematic? Does that leave us wiggle room later on to make changes? Or as is stated in the summary of request, is that specific to the initial bondable amount? Okay, that's, that's my question.
Great question. My answer would be, and I'm going to look at Lynn, what this does is it designates for the total project cost. And I think I would advise, as I'm looking at Lynn, not to designate kind of in different sections because as we've had a little bit of a discussion in the, the drop historically that we talked about, we, while we didn't do a lot of legal, like, we, we don't believe that we could either use this money or other governmental funds for basically a drop that's a choice by a resident because it then becomes basically using governmental funds for something of a private use. So that was going to be problematic to use it for that. What the BPW, as you referenced, is, is we are, we are continually learning and trying to figure out ways because if you would charge that in a rate eventually, that would be, that would be something because people have the choice to either pay it, take advantage of it, or not. So that I think answers your question, Dave, with a cherry on top too.
Yeah, yeah, I, I accept that. I think we could have a nice discussion on what constitutes a private use, but we'll leave that for another time. So yeah, thank you for that explanation.
Any further discussion by council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Coronado?
Yes.
Arnsors?
Yes.
Hookstrid?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Peters? Mayor Pro Tim Corbin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, move on to item 6.1, gifts. Madam Clerk, can you read the gifts? As soon as you get your glasses on.
The city manager's office is pleased to report the following gifts. Community and Neighborhood Services Department, National Night Out Event held on August 2, 2022. 10% of proceeds from National Night Out sales. Spice Boys, $105.75. Cooking for Comfort, $70. It is recommended that these donations be accepted with appreciation, credited to the appropriate account and an expression of gratitude be forwarded to said donors.
Thank you.
I move to approve said, accept said gifts with a token of our appreciation.
Motion by Coronado, I have support.
Support.
Support by Arnsors. Madam Clerk, oh no, this is voice call. So all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, saying? Motion carries. Item 6.2, Downtown Principal Shopping District.
They stayed.
You're finally up.
They stayed.
They stayed and I'm probably going to take the first crack at this one.
I'm going to let you, I'm not even going to introduce this, Matt. You go for it, man.
Although I know that Kara is eager to come up and be in front of you tonight. This is an amendment to the assessment policy for the Principal Shopping District. I'm going to do a bit of a shameless plug here because I don't know if Keith is going to get it in his city manager comments, but this is the type of thing that is the result in Fall Fest this weekend. So we had two about thousand pound looking pumpkins get delivered into GDK Park earlier today and that's going to be one of the big pieces of Fall's Fest. This kind of an assessment is what that supports. This is a reaction to residential, resident, residential rental properties per the language per our city attorney, commonly known as Airbnbs or VRBOs, but there are some others as well. Those residential properties currently within the PSD are exempted from the assessment. But these are income generating properties that are in our downtowns that are now actually approaching us about being advertised and some over advertisement. So this is an amendment to the policy that would allow those properties to become associate members. If you're really familiar with the PSD assessment, you're, as I'm sure you all are, you are aware that hotels are exempted from this because they already pay into the CVB. Residential rental properties currently do not pay into that CVB assessment. So they're kind of getting a free ride, so to speak, in our downtown. And the fact that they're in our downtown, I think, is a big reason that they're able to be rented so often and for the prices that they get. So this is a, this is a recommendation to you. During the discussion at the PSD board meeting, we did discuss that, hey, if they do, from the Michigan Legislature, become included in that CVB assessment per bed, then we would likely want to pull this back so that we're not double dipping those properties. But in the interim, we would then, if they became an associate member, include them in our advertising and our normal stuff through the Principal Shopping District. I'm looking back at Kara, hopefully I got...
Yeah, I'll just say that it gives them the option to opt in at an annual basis. So it's not leveraging that assessment against them automatically, but if they wanted to be promoted as a downtown Holland lodging option, they could opt in as an associate member on an annual basis, similar to how Bulwark does and the library.
Yep. So just in case the folks at home didn't catch that one in the room, this is optional for them and would be at their request.
So they would consider the fee that they pay worth the advertisement that they get?
Yes. And I think those services are actually quite a bargain at what we're assessing.
Matt, what was the CVB cost? You said the hotels pay that. What's that acronym for? What does that mean?
Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
Any additional questions or comments for staff?
Just to make sure that, just clarity, if the, number one, that the homeowner or apartment owner or whatever has option to advertise and if it becomes part of the regular assessment, we don't need to have language in this particular that says all that.
Correct. I mean, we may choose to leave it in there in case they wanted, they chose to be included in the CVB fee and still wanted to be a PSD associate member, we'd welcome that. But yes.
So Matt, when they volunteer to do this, can they jump in and out? Or once they jump in, they're in?
I believe it's much like your three-step annual assessment, they're in for the year, they would get that services for the year and then they would be potentially not be in anymore.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? No questions for staff? Do we have a, what's the pleasure of council on this matter?
Move to approve the Principal Shopping District Assessment Policy Amendment.
Motion by Raymond?
Support.
Support by Coronado. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Arnsors?
Yes.
Hookstrid?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Peters? Mayor Pro Tim Corbin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Oh, Coronado.
I was going to say...
Coronado.
Yes.
I jumped. Thank you. Motion carries.
All right, communications from our city manager.
I've talked a lot tonight, really quick. We got Halloween stuff, fire truck, tulip time, community planting days. There's lots of information that goes out in newsletters and all our sources. They do a great job. Attend, enjoy. And it looks like we will see you next, October 19, not next week.
Thank you. Communications from mayor. I will first say, thank you to staff for sticking around for so long, especially toward the end there. Thank you very much. And then thank you to my fellow council members for putting up with me tonight, a little bit in and out of different things. So it's, I don't do this that often, so thank you for being patient with me. But we also have a proclamation for the Energy Efficiency Day and Councilman Arnsors is going to go ahead and read that on behalf of the mayor.
I am, so just pretend. Proclamation, whereas, energy efficiency is the cheapest, quickest and cleanest way to meet the city of Holland's energy needs, avoid dangerous pollution and reduce utility bills for residents and businesses in our community. And whereas, implementing the energy efficiency and other clean energy policies and programs can help boost economic opportunities and job creation while continuing to move the city of Holland toward a sustainable future. And whereas, smarter energy use reduces the amount of electricity needed to power our lives, which helps avoid power plant emissions that can harm our health, pollute our air and warm our climate. And whereas, for cities and states like ours that are trying to tackle harmful pollution, energy efficiency can get us about halfway toward our emissions reductions goals. And whereas, energy efficiency makes our homes and workspaces healthier, safer and more comfortable. And whereas, cutting energy waste saves U.S. households billions of dollars on their utility bills every year, up to $500 per household from appliance... utility bills every year, up to $500 per household from appliance efficiency standards alone. And whereas, energy codes for homes and commercial buildings also can significantly reduce energy costs and create new jobs. And whereas, the residents of the City of Holland can continue to contribute to our energy efficiency efforts by learning about and participating in our Home Energy 101 educational program. And whereas, a nationwide network of energy efficiency groups and partners has designated the first Wednesday in October as National Energy Efficiency Day. And whereas, together we can continue to contribute to our sustainability efforts by learning more about energy efficiency and practicing smarter energy use in our daily lives. Now therefore, I, Nathan Box, Mayor of the City of Holland, Michigan, and members of the Holland City Council, do hereby proclaim October 5, 2022, Energy Efficiency Day. I urge citizens to join us in supporting our clean energy goals and moving toward energy efficiency now and in the future, given under my hand and the seal of the City of Holland this 5th of October 2022, Mayor Nathan Box.
Thank you, appreciate that.
And I hope he's watching.
You made, I'm sure you made Mayor Box proud. Thank you very much. Next is the appointments, motions, and communications from city council members. Anything we'd like to share? Councilman Raymond?
Yeah, actually, not to put you on the spot here, Jay, but I wondered if you could share what Scott Spohoff was going to say at the end?
Yeah, we've been meeting for, I think it's been about four years since I agreed to be on this committee. I think the pitch, I remember the sitting council at the time voted not to get involved in that, because I think the feeling was that they want to have a committee, a regional committee, that people, every units of government don't like to give money, they can't give money to nonprofits. So it was an idea of saying, well, let's put some money in a basket and do some good things and do them regionally. And I think the thought at the time was, after years of the city paying more than their share and not being able to garner a lot of support from the other townships, we just thought that I'm not too sure that's our best use of time. Well, I think it was Keith that came on board and said, okay, well, listen, we got to start somewhere. They're going to do this thing. And I think our per capita, we put in about five or $6,000 a year, same as Holland Township, City of Holland, City of Zeeland, Laketown, and Fillmore Township. There's five of the nine, I think there's nine units of government in the MAC. And if we if you go on their website, you can see all the things in the last four years that we've allocated grants to. Most of them, the most, the largest one we ever gave today was today, was for $10,000 to help Park Township and a private group of citizens run an internet out to the lighthouse and put very high tech equipment on the lighthouse, so you can identify swimmers right down to latitude and longitude, so when there's a problem, it instantly goes to 911. And they're doing some other things with an emergency millage, and these people made it made a really important pitch. But what struck me was, it's an 80, I think they're looking to raise $80,000. And here's the these, all of our peers that go out in Lake Michigan are all subject to creating these waves that go out and sweep people out, right? What do you call them?
Undertow.
Undertow, tidal or riptide. We're all subject to that. So here's a group of people who are saying, we want to do this, want to educate people, want to figure out a way to do this, and then hopefully there are other communities who are suggesting that they're paying attention and say, well, we want to see how you guys do that, because maybe that's something we should do. They've also got the State of Michigan or the the MDEQ to do some research on this area and trying to figure out, based on the jetties of the way the peers act here, is there a way we can maybe eliminate or mitigate the amount of these these rip currents? So, you know, but our budget is $10,000 is a big gift. And we did an annual retreat about six months ago facilitated by Driesing and Associates and saying, okay, what do you want to do? Where do you want to go? What's preventing you from doing what you want to? So a large part of the thinking, at least on my part, was, let's fund things that don't have any other source, regional things, that if we don't give them money, it's really tough for them to go out and find some things. So if you look at the list we do, I think we've had some of that. I think we funded that telescope that went in at the Nature Education Center, and it's a huge thing, and everybody and their brother uses it. And that's in a township, we put that in a township that doesn't participate in this program we're in. So we're talking about, how do you get nine units of government? How do you how do you get them to understand that just because we you you put in a little bit of money and it gets spread out all over, it may not come back to your township, but we all live in this region? And I think it's probably one of the most significant regional thinking things we have about five units of government essentially making up the urban area of City of Holland on how to do this thing. So I remember early on in in my council days, we had this thing called the Berghoff Formula, where they said, listen, we got to get these townships to pitch in, because we're giving money to all these nonprofits and all these places are coming and using our nonprofits, and they're coming to us, and it's being used regionally, and the city's funding everything. So we had this thing, we said, Berghoff said, well, listen, we'll put in, we'll put in X, we'll put in whatever they put in, we'll double. And that never even worked, because we couldn't get buy in from the township to understand that the some of the social services are helping everyone. And now it's not just social services, but projects like this. So one meeting, about two meetings ago, Steve Spohoff came to the meeting and just said, listen, we're giving away, some of these grants were given away, a lot of these nonprofits are people doing good work, $5,000 isn't worth even the effort to do it, because they tell me to write it, and they pay somebody to write it, and the monitoring you got to do, it's good, we're working, we're doing this thing. But I think he said, you know, I'm going to my town, we said, listen, we've got these ARPA funds, we're going to put $50,000 a year for three years. And they passed that. He was here, he's been here twice, once he meant we, we didn't know the meeting took place down in the lobby. He said, and it's positioned on the fact that others follow suit. And there's a formula that we don't want to get into, but it's more of an approach to to units of government saying, listen, they want to put, we all fell into this money. What's that money for? And we had a discussion about that. By the way, not against broadband by any stretch of the imagination. I love it. I don't know how to use it, but I love it. How how do we, he said, we're going to, we're willing to put 150,000 in, 50,000 a year for three years, if everybody else throws in some money, because rather than give away $5,000 grants and $10,000 grants, if we could start giving away 25 or 50,000 dollar grants, we don't have to wait for people to apply. We can find out who's doing really critical research or regional efforts who legitimately need help and ask people to apply to forward this thing as we go forward, is find a way. So it's regional, it's regional thinking strategy, I think, at its best. So he was here tonight to challenge us to do the same thing. And I suppose that's a talk for another conversation, but the people around the table are dead set against, if we're going to do this, we want to do more. We can see the impact we're having, we can do more. And we're throwing $5,000 or $6,000 a year at it, could we do more? Is this regional cooperation is a priority of ours? Is that something we could think about? Whether it's ARPA funds, whether it's however. So I would encourage you all to go to the website and look in the last two or three years on this, who we funded, how much have we funded? They've got to give a report afterwards. There's a lot of nonprofits that are starting to come back, because we don't get, we have money in the budget. I think we had $42,000 when we started this morning. We gave away 10 and 5, one to a very impressive group of volunteers who want to really do something spectacular for us on our lakeshore that need money, and there's no other funding. And why the state, I still don't understand, the state's the biggest owner of that whole, it's the state park that we're trying to protect. And there's no, apparently there's no resources there. And the other was a grant to the Park Theater for insulating their roof as in their, as they continued down their path of restoring the inside of that building and making it as comfortable and as friendly and comfortable for their patrons as they can. So there's a few art things, we've done the Corral a few times, but they do, they've come in and they do things with kids from all over the region. There's a lot of good things going on with it. And I think the group, now that we've been together for a while, are saying, this is fun, but could it be more? And that was his challenge, and that's a discussion, I think, it's probably time for us to have some at some point about what that looks like. Thanks for asking.
Yeah, I think with that even, we have to remember reminder services, too, is there's guidance, we talked about the ARPA funds, how it can be used, and so giving it to a nonprofit, we have to make, we have to ensure that when they then redistribute that, what the accountability of those funds are, the auditing requirements that we're going to have to what how that money was used. So we have to rethink, have to think holistically to how we might look at ARPA funds, generally speaking.
Yeah, maybe, Jay, if you just send some information or kind of what a proposal would be, really, Jay's Jay's right. I think this was something that I think I probably helped talk all of you into participating in, in the Community Energy Plan, or Enhancement Plan. We have two CPs, I guess, don't we? So I I have historically been a supporter. What I would probably say is probably don't use ARPA funds, and especially since we've kind of used that standard deduction, we've kind of moved it in. The only thing just functionally that you guys would have to make a decision on is, we don't have a budget for it above and beyond, so if you'd want to do it this year, we'd have to make a budget amendment, or we'd look at making a larger allocation next year. And then I think they do that, and I'm looking at Vince here, because I know it was set up from the beginning, just like when we do our neighborhood connector programs is the one that comes to mind. I think at one point, maybe the city was kind of like we would just kind of give out money a little bit, and the city attorney's office and our auditors reminded, oh, Lynn's gone, kind of reminded us, like, you can't do that, and really what you need to do is is, and I think your committee does that, and MAC manages that, is you do kind of a contract for services, where you define what it is that they're doing, and they outline that it meets a public purpose. So I trust that they do. Reporting and all that, yeah. But otherwise, I think, yeah, that's just a decision and kind of that for you all to make.
I'm glad you clarified that, because I did not know what he was talking about, really. Steve Spohoff, I mean, I was trying to get a handle on what he was talking about, so thanks for asking.
Yeah.
And thanks for clarifying.
Thank you for clarification. I'd love to see something, even on a study session, I mean, we bring stuff like this up, and we say, well, we want to talk about it, and then we drop it, right? So if that's something we want. Yeah.
Before we ask for any money, I mean, let's talk about what's the area possible with this group, I mean, they're dedicated. Hey, it'd be nice to have nine units of government at the table, and I don't know, but that's what it takes. But they're working on it, they're working on it in the MAC, they're, they're making time to have.
I think my point is, though, we bring stuff like this up, we need to commit to do something and talk about it, right? Not just bring it up, and then then it dies for you, and then we complain that we're not, we haven't talked about it. So if we could just look for an opportunity.
Share some stuff, and then we'll just slap it into a into a discussion.
Yeah, appreciate it. Anyone else to go to the order?
Actually, I do, and I have two things, so get comfortable, kids. No, October 2022 is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and there is a proclamation to this effect, which I will not read, I'll just give you some highlights. First one is, in 2020, the Michigan State Police's Incident Crime Report indicated that there were almost 65,000 domestic violence offenses committed by current or former intimate partners. Two, this is in every community, regardless of sexual orientation, race, religion, age, or ability. Three, Michigan is committed to holding domestic violence perpetrators accountable and reducing risk and harm to all victims, as well as providing support and resources to enhance safety. And finally, the Holland area has many resources available to victims of domestic abuse. Everyone knows someone, so there's resilience, ask, go to the Holland Public Safety Department, ask anyone, and Good Samaritan, and they can refer you. So that's important to know. The second is, election season is upon us, and you can see the campaign signs. November 8 is a general election, and I may do this at the next council meeting, too, because the election is in on November 8. Our city clerk's office oversees all elections in the City of Holland. Kathy Kathy Grimm, our own city clerk, works in coordination with the Ottawa and Allegan County Clerks, as you saw Bob Janetsky here today. So we encourage everyone to vote, it is safe and secure, and as Bob mentioned, our clerks work very hard to make sure this is so. You may get information on how votes are counted and the safety and security of voting in Michigan by going to the Ottawa County website on securing the vote, and I'm sure Allegan County has something similar. You can, you may check your registered voters voter status online by going to the State of Michigan voter website, or check the League of Women Voters website. The clerk's office will be open the Saturday before the election, which is November, that Saturday is November 5, from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., to register voters and issue absentee ballots. Applications are also available on the city website or by mail, but those, there's a deadline of October 24. Doing it in person, you can do it even on the day of the election. So and our very own Ottawa County Clerk, Justin Robach, and his elections coordinator, Katie Sims, are available in different county communications locations in October to discuss elections, and if you have any question on ballots or safety or audits. And the closest one is October 11, 6 to 8 p.m. at the North Side, North Branch, Herick Library. So just vote, people. And there are, you know, there are other, outside of the gubernatorial election, there are other electoral positions open, as well as proposals having to do with schools. And there's a school board, Holland School Board Forum tomorrow night at East Middle School, if you're interested in hearing those candidates. And there's next Thursday, October 20, there's a meet and greet for all the other candidates for office, and that will be at the Holland Armory at 7 o'clock. So vote. The end. That's enough out of me. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Anything else? Okay, just need a motion to adjourn. Someone by Raymond, support for, support?
Support.
Support by Peters? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. A goodie.